Welcome, everyone, to the fiscal year 2023 of public hearings on the draft warrant. And we have got a quorum of selection present, though it's not the purpose of us to vote during a public hearing, it's the providing and exchanging of information. Do we have Steve Filbrick zooming in?
I can't see his name out there, maybe request that he announce his presence.
Steve, are you, are you in Zoom land? I can text him as well. All right, let me just send a quick reminder that we are not at six, but at five. So bear with me, sorry about this, everyone. All right. We, conflict of interest disclosure with any meeting, we ask that if if someone has a financial conflict of interest, meaning you can't advocate for something that you can financially benefit from, that you disclose that. Joe, any adjustments to the agenda?
None, ma'am, chair.
All right. Unfortunately, this year, we did not have a budget committee. We started off with with a quorum. And then one had to pull out and resign. Just couldn't fit it in the schedule. And those that remained, since they needed a quorum to put forth their recommendations on the warrant, they decided amongst themselves, they just weren't going to meet since they couldn't put forth a recommendation. So if anyone is interested in the budget committee, please fill out a request for appointment. So the next item on the agenda are the nonprofits to present their requests. We are asking that you try to keep your presentation to two minutes. And we're just going to proceed in the order that they are listed. And if for some reason, you know, we have a nonprofit that that isn't zoomed in yet, we'll circle back at the end and make sure everyone had an opportunity to speak. Missed it. Did I miss anything? All right, so starting off, first on the list is the Rangeley Lakes Cross Country Ski Club. They've put in a request for $9,600. And I am going to, I'm going to time these presentations just so we can, you know, just, if you go a little over, you know, no worries, but I just want to try to keep everything on track. So is there someone out there from the Rangeley Lakes Cross Country Ski Club?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Beth, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make it short and sweet. We run the Nordic Ski Center slash Trail Center up on Saddleback Mountain Road. Our club does, and the monies that that you would be donating would be going towards operation and maintenance of the center. We have over 30 miles of trails, Nordic Trails, plus narrow snowshoeing and biking trails. We have. We have local days during the season where locals can ski and rent for free. We have free passes and rentals for area children. We have three big events up there during the season. We have a snowshoe race, cross-country ski races, and.
Are you still there, still there, Beth? Steve says he's waiting in the wings to come in.
Trying to. We got a grant to allow us to build bike trails within our Nordic Trails. And so that's going to be going on this summer. We're excited about that. We also are trying to upgrade our equipment with this camp capital campaign. And we also hopefully will have flush toilets soon. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
Bonus. Beth, like, we missed you for a period of time before you mentioned the capital campaign. So I don't know if you want to backtrack and and make a make a point that that you that we didn't hear, but it was.
Yeah, we have free season passes and rentals for area children. We also have local stays where people can recreate and rent for free. And we have the famous gnome home Rome that is a collaboration between the school, the art program there, and the Trail Center where people can come.
Okay, thank you very much.
Out and try to find the gnome homes. It's sort of like an orienteering type of thing. Yep.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, we have got the Rangeley Lakes Heritage Trust Water Quality Protection and Invasive Plant Program. Their request is $14,000. And do we have a representative zooming in that would like to speak to this?
Good evening, everybody. I am Amanda L. Liberty with the Rangeley Lakes Heritage Trust. Many of you are familiar with our Courtesy Boat Inspectors, which are a huge part of our headwaters lake protection program. We've been coordinating this program with the support of the town of Rangeley since, I believe, at least 2007. But the aim of this program is to be the front line of defense against aquatic invaders like milfoil and hydrella, and even some flora and additional flora and fauna that we wouldn't see with our naked eye. So educating the public is even more important. The Courtesy Boat Inspectors are at our highest volume boat launches during the busiest parts of the week, so Saturday, Sunday, and on holidays, we do staff everywhere, Lake Muslo, Haynes Landing, the town park, Cops Act River, the Bemis launch, Millbrook, and and this year, we're hoping to staff Steep Bank Pool on the Kennebago River. That'll really be dependent on water. Really, our whole season will be dependent on water. But more and more, the the need for volunteers is not being met by our community. And so we are looking at bringing on and bringing on staff and spending more staff time documenting plants and investigating water quality across the region. So it's kind of a high view of the program if anybody has any questions.
So Amanda, anyone interested in volunteering, do they just call the Heritage Trust main office?
They can do that. Anybody who's interested in volunteering can go right on our website and figure out how the various ways to participate with the Rangeley Lakes Heritage Trust. But certainly popping into the office and just talking with us, where our door is always open.
Thank you. Next up is Rangeley Family Medicine. Anyone present to speak on that? All right, circle back. The Maine Forestry Museum, their request is $2,500. Anyone zooming in to speak on behalf of the Maine Forestry Museum? Okay. The Rangeley Lakes Snowmobile Club is next. They've got a request for $50,000.
How are we doing? You guys hear me?
Yes.
How you doing? This is Tyler Filbrick. I'm the Vice President of the Rangeley Lakes Snowmobile Club.
Welcome, Tyler.
So we're requesting $50,000 as we do every year. I'm sure everybody knows that that number has not changed in quite a few years now, but that's all we're requesting this year. Our breakdowns have far exceeded that $50,000 this year, as we kind of had a rough year with that. And as everybody is feeling the effects of the fuel prices coming up here in the later part of the winter, that's affected us greatly. So with the fluctuation of the weather that we had this year, it didn't make for a great snowmobile season, but we made it through it. But here we are again, going into the summer, already gearing up for next year and starting on trail maintenance and everything else. And the $50,000 from the town would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Any questions for Tyler? Thank you. The Rangeley Lakes Chamber of Commerce has a request for $50,000. Anyone from the chamber? All right. Moving on to the Rangeley Public Library. Their request is for $44,581.
Cindy, I am here. I'm sorry, I was trying to unmute myself.
Yep, no problem. We're going to back up to the chamber.
Yeah, thank you. This is Joanne Dunlap, and I am currently doing most of the things that Karen was doing before. And if I mess it up, it's because I'm not Karen. We're asking for $50,000. What we spend the money you give us on is only on advertising. We don't spend it on anything else. We spend $7,330 on promotional materials, which are the things that they have at the rest stops on the on the thruway coming in. Print advertising is $15,515. Digital advertising is $32,300. Radio advertising, $1,700. Main visitor center fees in order to put the promotional materials in them is $1,650. Sponsorship advertising, $600. Trade show fees, $600. And web hosting domains and development is $1,867, and it totals $63,352. The thing we're doing this year, which is new and really, we're kind of excited about, is we're working with Explore New England, and they're coming in early June and filming the birding and dark skies. Can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Dark skies and the summer activities at Saddleback. And this is going to be on a show on Nessen, which appeals primarily to sportsy people. We're trying to expand the shoulder seasons. They called and wanted to know if we wanted to do a show on Rangeley. And I said, we'd love to, but not summer. And they're like, what? I said, no, not summer. We don't need any more people in the summer. So we're trying to expand May and June with this filming. And it's very exciting. And if you see a cameraman in early June, that's what they're doing. And that's about it.
Great, thank you, Joan. Any questions for Joan and the Chamber of Commerce? All right.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you, Joan. Rangeley Public Library has a request for $44,581.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, this is Barbara Burgess, the Treasurer for the Rangeley Public Library, which is owned and operated by the Rangeley Library Association, 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The amount that we're asking for this year is up a little bit. It's up three and a half percent. The amount asked for the previous six years was unchanged. The total budget's $179,000, and that's strictly for the operating budget to staff and operate the Rangeley Public Library, which is open five days a week. Were mainly fully staffed during COVID. We had to get Janet Wilson, the Director, and recruited an awesome job. We remain fully staffed. They did, it did impact our programs because we couldn't meet in person, but they did a fabulous job and were really creative at stepping up to still supplying patrons' needs during COVID. So that's all I have. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions for Barbara and the Rangeley Library Association?
I guess just one, I'm sorry, just add one other thing. Rangeley Plantation did meet and agreed to the request. The request went up the same percentage for the town and the plantations. And so the total municipal support requested is $74,000 and change. So we ask from a Rangeley Plantation, just over 11, Dallas, just over 11, and then Sandy River, just over 7,000. So Rangeley's Plantation is the only one who's met so far, and they approved the request. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll circle back. Next up, the Rangeley Health and Wellness Partnership with a request for $10,199. This is the first of two requests. Anyone from Rangeley Health and Wellness? All right, we'll circle back. Lifelight.
Hi, Beth.
Hello.
Hi, shall I just start?
Is is this for Rangeley Health and Wellness?
No, Lifelight.
Oh, Lifelight, yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, I am requesting $2,000 from the town of Rangeley. Yeah, $2,000 from the town of Rangeley. I want to first thank you for your past support. And I am going to do a very brief, very quick, high-level overview of Lifelight. So we are a statewide organization. We have three bases spread across the state. We have a base in Bangor, we have a base in Sanford, and we have a base in Lewiston. Each of those has a helicopter, and then the Bangor base also has a fixed-wing airplane. They're comprised of medical crews, so a pilot, an RN, and a paramedic. And we essentially bring ICU care to patients. So since 1998, we've transported 33,000 patients. Ninety-eight of those have been Rangeley residents, three in the past year. And then we've also made 119 scene calls in the town of Rangeley. Happy to take any questions, but that's just a really brief overview.
Any questions for Lifelight? No change in their request from past years for $2,000. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care.
We've got Safe Voices next on the list with a request of $500. Is there anyone from Safe Voices?
Hi, yes, I'm here. My name is Emily Mitchell, and I am the Development Operations Coordinator for Safe Voices. Safe Voices is the only domestic violence center serving Andrus, Scoggin, Franklin, and Oxford counties. We were established in 1977, and our mission is to support and empower those who are affected by domestic violence. In the last fiscal year, we served 204 individuals in Franklin County for a total of 610 service hours on our part. As was said, we are requesting $500 this year, and we have actually not been awarded any funds from Rangeley since 2014. So we are really hoping to change that today. And I can give you a little bit of a snapshot of the services that we provide. So we have offices in Lewiston, Farmington, Rumford, and South Paris. We operate a 24-hour helpline for survivors, service providers, and others who are affected by domestic violence. We operate two shelters. One is a 17-bed shelter, and the other is a six-bed emergency safe house for victims of sex trafficking and sexual exploitation. And we are actually in the midst of renovating a third building that will comprise of apartments for survivors of domestic violence. And this is a confidential location, so I can't share where it is today, but it's going to be a huge support to our communities. We also offer transitional housing, so getting people out of our shelters and into their own apartments, being financially stable. We offer court advocacy to support with criminal and civil proceedings in all three counties. And we also do community prevention and education. So we go to schools and talk to kids and young adults about domestic violence and how to keep themselves safe. And I would be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Safe Voices? Thank you for the information. Rangeley Friends of the Arts has a request for $10,000. Anyone from Rangeley Friends of the Arts? Red Cross, a request for $1,000.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Nicole Evans, Executive Director of the Central and Midcoast Chapter of the Red Cross. Thanks for inviting us here today. Making a request for $1,000 to support our disaster cycle services, ensuring that individuals and families can receive the assistance that they need in event of a disaster. I thank the community for all of their collective support for all lines of our services and hope to work with all of you in the future on many more activities. And also make a request for everyone as a reminder that we need all of your help in addition to the support to help connect anyone who may have a need for Red Cross services to give us a call at any time, even if there's a fire, at 1-800-RED-CROSS, so that we can ensure that they get connected to our services. Thank you so much, and I look forward to answering any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the American Red Cross? Okay. Thank you. Maine Public Radio has submitted a request for $100. Is there anyone from Maine Public Radio? Community Concepts, a request for $2,000.
Hi, my name is Chelsea. First off, I would like to update that. I accidentally put $2,000 on our request form and meant $200, and I very much apologize for that mistake that was on me. I'll just keep going to say that we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and community action agency, serving Oxford, Andrus, Scoggin, and Franklin Counties. I know that Rangeley has supported our agency in the past, and thank you very much. Your support helps us provide a variety of services to local residents, including rides for older adults to much-needed medical appointments, heating assistance for low-income residents, workforce development services, and homebuyer education. In the past fiscal year, Community Concepts invested over $880 in direct costs of services to your town, helping four residents. Your contribution helps us to defray the cost of services and provides the much-needed match for federal, state, and private funds. Your partnership in the past has helped us improve the quality of life for residents in Rangeley and in your county, and we would greatly appreciate your continued support.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Community Concepts? Request of $2,000. Okay, not seeing any? Thank you. Seniors Plus has submitted a request for $3,000.
Good afternoon. My name is Valerie Cole, and I'm a community services specialist with Seniors Plus and have been with them for many, many years, but I haven't had the opportunity to speak to the town of Rangeley, so I appreciate you letting me talk. And also, we are very thankful for all the past donations and funds that you've helped us. We rely on that so that we can continue to get some federal dollars to keep our programs going. So we cover with a Western Area Agency on Aging, there are, the whole state is covered, and we cover the tri-county area, so Oxford, Franklin, and Andrus, Scoggin County. I am going to give you a, just a breakdown of some of the services over the past year that we provided to Rangeley. Some of our services are the Meals on Wheels, which is the home-delivered meals if somebody is returning from the hospital, or they're struggling with mobility, or they've had a change in their living situation. And we delivered 521 meals to the town of Rangeley last year. I work for the Community Services Department, so information and referral and collaboration with all the other agencies to help people with things like end-of-life decisions, applications for housing, just kind of teasing through that whole process. If somebody, they reach us by email, and somebody doesn't have a phone, and they don't know how to go about doing that. So we will meet with them one-on-one, help them, you know, get a phone that's affordable to them. So it's it's services like that with the information and referral team. We also provide Medicare counseling, and we're we're not in it for anything, so it makes it different for people. It's basically educating you on what your choices are when you're eligible for Medicare and helping you make some decisions with that. During open enrollment, we can help get people in different programs with that, help them with their prescription drug plans, and we do all that at no cost to them. We can enroll them into the drug plan. So we did service five residents of Rangeley with the Medicare counseling. And with the information referral, which is basically our call line, 47 of your residents reached out for that. So we are offering educational classes, and we've had to get creative because of the pandemic, so we offer them virtually. And now we're opening it up so that people can also come into the office, or we will set something up in a town if they request it, as long as we have enough participants. So we're doing both of those at the same time, where if somebody can't travel to us, we can offer that by Zoom, or they can come into the education center and watch the presentation and the education with that. So we've had to get a little creative like everybody else, and we lost a lot of our volunteers with things, so, but it's all worked out well. We have, we're offering support groups, we're offering caregiver trainings.
I just need you to wrap things up.
Yep, okay, okay. So I'm just going to take questions if anybody has any questions about it.
Right, are there any questions at all for Seniors Plus? I don't see any here in the room, nor in in Zoom world, so thank you very much for your.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have the Acrosec ATV Club with their request of $2,000. Is there anyone from the Acrosec ATV Club? Sexual Self Prevention and Response Services, they have a request for $750.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Harmon, and I am one of the prevention educators out of the Farmington office. So Sappers, we cover the tri-county area, so Franklin, Oxford, and Andrus, Scoggin. I do want to thank the town of Rangeley for your past support. A quick overview of what we do. So Sappers is very committed to ensuring that the children in our communities are safe and that survivors in our community are taken care of, being that with Franklin County, that is, we actually have the hot, one of the highest rates of child sexual assault, which is where we have a lot of focus in prevention education in the school systems. We do help run the main 24-hour helpline, as well accompany survivors to the hospitals, courts, as well as making police reports, one-to-one advocacy, support groups for teens and adults, school and education, excuse me, school prevention education and community education, as well as professional trainings. We are the ones who have gone into the school systems and done trainings for the school staff. And I think that's about it. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the Sexual Self Prevention and Response Services group? Nope, not seeing any, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Western Maine Transportation Services has a request for $531.
Good evening, I'm Craig Zerhurst, and you're lucky that I cannot get my camera to work. So at any rate, oh, I know what I'm doing wrong here. Let's try it this way. Good evening. Western Maine Transportation Services is very pleased to be able to offer second Tuesday every month transportation between Farmington and Rangeley. This past year, we were unsuccessful attracting any riders, but the service is still available, and people at the townhouse and other locations are aware of it. More, I think, interesting is that in partnership with United Way of the Tri Valley area, starting pretty much now, we are working with them to provide volunteer rides from Rangeley to other locations regionally and locally. Hopefully, this will work to take some of the pressure off of the health access fan and provide some additional opportunities. We have three volunteers from the community up there already signed up. And I say we, I really shouldn't be taking the credit for this. This has been due to the hard work of Mary Woodworth, who is the Coordinator for United Way. Western Maine Transportation is really only serving as a resource, and we're taking care of background checks for the drivers for them. But it's a super important program that was identified through work of the United But it's a super-important program that was identified through work of the United Way, and we thank you for your past support. We're asking for $531 again this year, and it's helping make up the difference that we have suffered from not having county funding. Thank you very much, be glad to take any questions.
Any questions? Yes, Steve?
Good evening. A question, have you contacted Paul Newt with the Rangeli Health Ride and coordinated with him? My fear is that taking volunteers out of Rangeli for your service would hinder his program and Rangeli's program, which we subsidize heavily.
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, and if there's ever a question about it, either let Mary Woodworth at United Way or me know about it. But the idea is that these will be volunteers who are basically already going to a particular destination. These are not meant to remove volunteers from the health access rides pool. We're very sensitive to the good work that the town and Paul are doing, so yes, I would say we are coordinated.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Steve.
Good question, Steve, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Western Maine Transportation Services and their request for $531? Rangeli Housing Development Corporation and their request for $7,500. Anyone from Rangeli Housing Development Corp? Rangeli Community Radio Project and their request for $4,750.
Good evening, how do you read me? Hello, can you hear me okay?
Can hear you just fine. Are you still there, Dave?
How about now?
Okay, yep, can hear you now.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you for accommodating our application this year. And we continue to service Rangeli with community service announcements and entertainment and education. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, our license is a non-commercial educational frequency similar to public radio, which doesn't reach Rangeli reliably, there's no, the only city-grade signal on Rangeli is the community radio station. And one thing that we service in Rangeli is all the nonprofits, anyone on nonprofits that wants to get their word out on the air with an event or a plug, we're just part of our service. So, all the, all the groups presenting tonight can utilize WRGY as an asset, as well as the town governments and the plantations as well. So, anyway, this year, we're trying to gradually reduce the amount we request as our station grows with underwriting and members. And it's important for us to maintain a presence with the town and plantations as far as funding goes, because one of our new efforts is grant writing. And when we grant write, the fact that we can demonstrate support from the town and plantations is a great asset to these applications. And yeah, I entertain any questions. Thank you for your current and past support.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave McMillan and WRGY Community Radio? All right, seeing none.
Hey, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Do I need to stay plugged in here, or can I sign off now and?
You are free to sign off. You're on the warrant, on the ballot, and folks can cast their vote at that time. So, basically, I just needed you to present info.
Okay, fantastic, thank you much, take care.
Take care. All right, we'll circle back to the top for those that weren't present the first time around. Is there anyone here from Rangeli Family Medicine to speak to their request of $1,500? Okay. Maine Forestry Museum and your request for $2,500.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Don Chase here, treasurer for the museum. Our request is for $2,500, which is a $500 increase over last year and equal to 2018, I believe. We've bumped all of our requests up, the only one we've heard back from would be Rangeli Plantation, who has given us our request there. This is mainly to cover our, our big item is the parade, logging festival parade. We also do the Apple Festival in October, but the big one is the parade, and the town has been very generous to support it each year, and I hope you can continue to do that. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Don Chase and the Maine Forestry Museum and their request? Not seeing any, Don, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the Rangeli Region Health and Wellness Partnership? We have two requests, one for $10,199 and a second for $10,000. Rangeli Friends of the Arts and their request for $10,000. Anyone from Rangeli Friends of the Arts? Maine Public Radio. Acossic ATV Club. And the Rangeli Housing Development Corporation. All right, it looks like we are through our nonprofits presentations. And now we've been to the draft of the town meeting warrant. I guess I should, I don't think, I don't think I announced the total requests this year from nonprofits for their donations is $226,511 is the total request this year. Yes?
Will that be less reflective of the announcement that the other group made, that they only intended to give us a $200 request instead of a $2,000 request?
Their, their application indicates 2,000.
It does, Madam Chair. If the board would prefer, I can reach out to them by email and clarify that prior to you signing the warrant, if that's your preference.
Given that she just announced it in the public hearing, that her intent was only 200, yeah, I'd like to get her off that 2,000 and bring her down to 2. That's my opinion.
Well, it may improve their chances of getting that award as well.
I'll send that all over email tomorrow.
All right, the draft town meeting warrant. We're not going to go through all of the traditional business articles. There are articles that are required by law regarding taxes, the interest on unpaid taxes, and abatements, and the ability to accept gifts, et cetera, that's all standard every year. The wording doesn't change. So, it is, you know, this goes through Article B18. We did catch a typo in Article B18 where the word "will" will be omitted. So, going, starting on page three with Article B19, it's just a reminder that the town shall authorize the municipal office to spend not, to spend an amount not to exceed three-tulds of the budgeted amount if any budget article fails for essential services only. And so what that allows for is a revote, or, you know, be another public hearing on why that budget article failed, and amendments made, but it gives that department the ability to still operate while the revote is waiting. And Joe, in the past, we've had a list of essential services, they typically don't appear on the warrant, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, there'll be, they're in the town. They're in, the essential services are listed in the town report, but are not a part of the article. And then again, B20, shall the town vote on all warrant articles by secret ballot for 2023? So, that will continually appear year after year to approve a secret ballot warrant. So, Article B21 is new. Shall the Board of Selectmen be authorized to expend up to $50,000 from the first installment of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, also known as the America Rescue Act, for the purpose of providing a one-time retroactive premium payment to employees who worked during the COVID-19 state of emergency? And I think I'll have Joe speak to this, because Joe is very familiar with ARPA, its restrictions, what qualifies, what doesn't. So, Joe, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The most important thing to think about when we talk about this article is that this applies for folks who worked from March of '20 to June of 2021, so there's a timeframe there with the state of emergency. Second most important thing is this is for folks who work in person. So, we have administratively picked out the hours of folks who worked in person during that timeframe. And why it's important that folks were in person, because that's when they would have had the highest risk of contracting or working with the COVID-19 virus. The employees on this list are essentially anybody who worked during that timeframe in person. So, remote work doesn't count, if you work at home, those hours don't count. It does apply to folks in the town office, folks who have other works, folks in the fire department, both full-time folks and folks who responded on calls, so we have those hours broken down. $50,000 essentially equates to $1 per hour. That's what the math was up here, it's actually just below $50,000, $49,000 and change, but we use $50,000 just for the nice round number up to $50,000. So, that's it in a nutshell, it is specifically for that purpose, for folks that work during that timeframe and were in person.
And this isn't something the town created, this is something that the, that is, other towns are doing as well. And it's the only expense that can be retroactive. Everything else has to be, has to be spent for, for future items that are approved within the ARPA or the American Rescue Plan Act.
So, the town, just one final note, Madam Chair, the town is eligible for approximately $120,000 to receive from, from not getting out of the funds. We received the first half, which is the first $60,000, so this $50,000 will be, is proposed to come out of that first $60,000. Obviously, I recommend that going to town meeting, the way the town, folks have an opportunity to act on this, and I would recommend that the board do have any of our funds going forward in the state.
Anything else, any comments from the board? Any questions from the public regarding Article B21? Article B22 is rather lengthy, and this has to do with, the question is, shall the town vote to join the Maine Public Employees Retirement System, also known as Maine PERS, as a participating local district effective July 1, 2022? So, this is the, the state pension plan that's available for public employees. The, the state sets the rate as to what percentage of the town pays in and what percentage the employee pays in. So, the first one, to offer Plan 2C to its full-time police officers and firefighters who work at least 40 hours per week, 52 weeks per year. This is a plan that was selected by the employees, and there were, there were numbered to choose from. The C indicates that it is, it will be adjusted for cost of living once you enter that retirement, once you are fully retired. To offer regular Plan AC to all other full-time employees who work at least 40 hours per week, 52 weeks per year. Again, this is selected by the employees. To exclude all other employees who work less than full-time, including its elected and appointed officials, from participating in Maine PERS. To allow its eligible employees who are currently employed by the town on July 1, 2022, who elect to join Maine PERS to purchase credit for any and all years of prior service upon the employee's full payment of all associated costs. The town will not participate in the purchase of prior service, and so employees are responsible for paying the full liability associated with this service. And so, basically, Maine PERS will set an annual rate to buy a year of service. And, and so the, the Board of Selectmen voted not to cap that, since it's the employee's own resources that they're using, and they would work directly with Maine PERS in purchasing these years of service where they worked for the town of Rangeli. So, that's, that's a little something extra for, for our employees to, to buy into. Dennis, with your hand up.
Yes, I'm just gonna ask you, does that, is that, can they purchase that with pre-tax laws or after-tax?
Yeah, they, Joe, they can tap into their
457.
457 accounts and withdraw that without penalty to purchase their
Yeah, the only other question is, how does this program line up with the present or one of the rules of the
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. Joe, did you want to speak to that?
Continue, or do you eliminate?
They can still, we won't match it.
Oh, but you're making match now, eh?
Yes. Yep, so we match up to 6% of an employee's contribution. If they enter Maine PERS, they can contribute, continue to contribute, but there's no match. Joe, what do you have to add?
That's absolutely correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. It, over the years, we've talked about this, and it's, it's finally got to the point where, you know, we can, we can present it to a town meeting. It's affected our ability to hire in the past, no doubt about it. If, if there is another, you know, another employee who is, you know, who would love to work for the town of Rangeli, we've run into during interviews where folks have said, "Well, I've, I've bought into Maine PERS, I've worked for, you know, you know, whatever town." And they come here, and we don't participate, so they can't continue to earn their years. And so, it's, we feel it's really important that, that the town offer, offer this, and we hope the voters support that. So, this last section is, has to do with, when can people join, how long do they have? So, E is to adopt provisions of 5 MRS, and it lists the sections as allowed by Maine PERS rule, Chapter 803, with an optional period to participate who previously declined. And so, basically, what, what this indicates is, beginning in 2022, to annually offer employees to annually offer employees who have been employed for less than five years. And in two thousand and twenty two, eligible employees who have reached five years of employment between November one, twenty one, and November first of two thousand and twenty two, the opportunity to join main PERS on prospective basis. And so basically, those that have worked for the town less than less than five years, if they don't elect, if this passes and they don't elect to join this first year, there'll be an open enrollment period that they can participate in up to their fifth year of employment with the town of Rangel. Those that are currently employed by the town that have five years or more employment, they have this one shot to participate in main PERS, and that's really typically how it's done. But the board wanted to broaden that to to allow for, you know, some of our newer employees, you know, to think about it and really gauge, you know, be able to participate once, once they had some time to process their, you know, their income and whatnot. So just something that the board really wanted to allow the act up to five years for for those employees. And lastly, to authorize the town manager to sign the agreement between the town and main public employees retirement system. So that's all Article B twenty two. It's long and segmented, but there really wasn't another way to put it. So are there any questions about Article B twenty two? Yes, Dennis?
I'm just gonna make a comment. We all know, however, there's the higher people, fine people, and expensive training people. You need to take care of your employees in order to retain them, and I think this is a good plan, and it's a long time coming.
Yeah, we're excited to offer it. All right, moving into the into the Article C section. So once we, once we get beyond, so, I mean, I'll briefly list the reserve. Article C one is all the reserve requests. And then when we get down to the to the bottom, to the selectman administration assessor, which is all itemized out on page three, we'll go around to the board. And and they can discuss, they can point, make some quick points as to whether this that department had a decrease or an increase, and just a little note why. So our reserve request this year totaled one hundred and eighty thousand, and it's fifty thousand dollars for the fire department reserve, fifty thousand dollars to the public works reserve, twenty thousand dollars to the police reserve, twenty-five thousand dollars to the sewer reserve, twenty-five thousand dollars to the cemetery reserve, and ten thousand dollars to the town park reserve. These requests all relate to their long-range capital plans. And everything else is fairly. Seven thousand dollars for the express use of capital equipment. Article C three is is basically computer, server, and install expenses. Right, moving into the departments. So I'll go ahead and start off with selectmen, and then I'll go to my left and have Shelley speak to assessor, and then we'll just go around from there, ethna. So the selectman budget totals eighty thousand, sixty dollars. It's down by five point nine eight percent, and that's basically because we're anticipating fewer legal fees this year. So that is the, that's the selectman's budget. Administration?
So the administration, the request for two hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. That is a two point oh two increase, and the increase is due to salary wages overtime. With like Medicare health insurance has also increased, and the MMA dues is also increased.
Ethna, assessing?
Assessing budget. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty three selectman budget is seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and two dollars. It was a point five five percent increase. That's due to the three percent increase in the assessing contract.
Thank you, Ethna. Ethan, touch on finance?
I'm gonna let you title it.
Okay. Finance is up by one point three one percent. The request for finance is one hundred and fifty-one thousand, four sixty-six, and it's an increase in salary wages line, which is three percent. We've got an increase in the audit, so went from twenty-three to more than twenty-six thousand and change. And that is the also the the two lines that caused the increase for finance department. Next is planning. Did you want to touch on planning, Ethan, or should I go, Michelle?
I don't think I'm gonna touch on anything.
Okay.
I didn't get the homework assignment where I had to be impressed exactly what we talked about earlier. Not the kind of thing I remember over weeks and weeks.
Yeah, it's it's just our summary. It's just in front of us. No, that's fine. Shelley, planning?
So with planning, there is a decrease of sixteen point six eight in that line item. And I'm trying to think of the, a lot of the things had no change. There was a decrease with the ARPA dues, consultant services, and software. It was a reduced reduction for the office and computer supplies in addition to mileage.
Any questions? Ethna, town office building?
Fiscal year two thousand and twenty three selectman recommendation, recommended budget is seventy-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. I don't believe that that's an increase.
The increase?
Did they move expenses from something entirely different to this budget line?
Madam Chair, there's an increase in this in this budget for fifteen thousand dollars for the finale or the finish words of the entrance of the town.
Okay.
That'd be a division ten.
The repair and maintenance, yeah, that's that increased fifteen thousand dollars. Yeah. Okay. All righty. The public safety building, a decrease of one point seven six percent. The request is for eighty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. Basically, just looking at the debt interest on on line forty-seven has decreased. The contract services has decreased. Really, the only line that went up was electricity because of the anticipated expenses with those services. But overall, a one point seven six percent decrease.
My question, the vote building, have you guys anticipated the heating costs for it?
It's, I'll, I'll let Joe speak to that because I, it sounds like, you know, it was discussed with with the department heads and whatnot, so.
We did discuss events here, and I know, we know that it's been volatile, the last month or so. We're playing a lot of historical numbers and and basically forecast that we're going to be reasonably safe. We're pulling a budget which is a little bit higher than last year.
Yep, so we lock in every year, we ask for fuel bits. And, you know, so we lock in at a at a per gallon price for the heating season. And so that's that's standard practice. Yeah. Any other questions following up with Harold's? Right, town clerk?
So the town clerk line item is down sixteen point two eight percent. The amount to be at sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. And the decrease was due to insurance and the office computer and election supplies with postage, and also as well as telephone and internet.
One thing that's changed, Joe, with with all these budgets is they each, each of these departments had their own budget line for computer repairs and maintenance. And so the computer repair and maintenance line has been removed from these individual departments because we contract, you can't, with Expanet. To, and it just, Joe, I guess you could speak to that rationale.
Sure, so our thought process on this, Madam Chair, was to to try for a couple of years to help lump together all of our IT services. But what was happening was we would budget small amounts in each department and go, expect that that will get us through. But it would take one or two or three serious calls in one department, and then that budget was way over. And then another man ended up being honest, so we said, let's, let's just make this one thing, one contract, if you will. And and that way, when they come, they can kind of hit all of the places at once and kind of rule again. Look for some economies of scale, if you will, some efficiencies. In theory, that's working, as I told the board as we worked through this process. We, I kind of avenged a little bit because there were some things that came up that we weren't expecting. But the the process, I think, has has some merit, and that's kind of how we drew up to that conclusion of taking it out of each individual area, putting it in one area. So we'll try another couple of years, and hopefully it continues to work for us.
So just, you know, just explain, you know, why there are some negatives in these accounts because that that line was completely, completely removed. So Shelley, did you finish town clerk? I'm sorry, it didn't. Town clerk is, are you, okay. Ethna, property and casualty insurance?
The selectman's recommendations, Lord, if we are trying to improve one for property and casualty insurance, it's fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five. It's a six percent increase based on its insurance. It's where we go.
Tax increment financing is is fifteen thousand dollars. And it basically covers the training costs, contract services. So there's a lot of, a lot of legal involvement that goes with a a tax increment financing district. There are a lot of, a lot of restrictions, a lot of rules we have to follow. And so that that has stayed, I'd say, the same. Next up is fire rescue.
So with the fire rescue, the request for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three is two thousand, eight hundred, I'm sorry, two hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And that is a one percent increase where there are increases with the salary lines for wages and part-time, the insurance, the office computer, postage, building, cleaning, and the telephone, electricity, heating, fuel, and water.
Any questions for fire rescue? Yes, Dennis?
Yes, Madam Chair, when the last time that we were here, we discussed this with the last. You asked me some questions about the fire department, and I was unable to answer them. I apologize for that. I have since been able to get some of that information. What we at the fire department do, we know that you voted against to put the article before the people try to replace a truck. We really feel and really would like to be able to work in some way, find a pathway that we can get something before the taxpayers in June. Because we do really need to place this truck, whether we do it new, used, or whatever. But we'd like to work with you somehow in order to get something before the taxpayers. And then if they decide they don't want to to buy a truck, then so be it. That's that's them. But we'd like to be able to get it to the people.
Madam Chair, may I speak too?
Absolutely.
So engine three is twenty-seven years old, it was purchased in two thousand and sixteen as a Band-Aid for a Band-Aid. That was the second purchase in fifteen years. This will be the third purchase in fifteen years. We're not making any gains on the capital plan. What we're proposing is, just put it out to the the taxpayers. We received quite a few correspondence over the last couple of weeks from my phone and emails blown up by people on the plantations, the residents of the plantations. I've heard from Sandy River, one person from Rangel Plantation, one person from Dallas. What we're proposing is, we'll get us back on track capital-wise. A new engine who lasts us twenty-five years. And we won't be in this position where we're putting a Band-Aid on something that's bound to let us down in the figure to be speaking. And this also allows us to get our capital improvement plan on track. So we don't have to worry about an apparatus fighting heads with another apparatus and causing the town more expensive. You had brought up the concern of the tower. We can put that off five years. We had an inspection on Tuesday. It was an NFA level inspection. It's gonna get us another five years, barring we don't have something disastrous happen. We'll probably get ten years, and we can correct that in the capital improvement plan. The chief's vehicle, which we discussed, we're going to a hundred thousand miles. We're not gonna be putting it into a three- or four-year rotation. It's a green vehicle. We don't need to expend that, those expenses right now. And I know we're putting you on the spot by bringing all the officers here, but.
Same, that's what a public hearing is for.
We had, we've had an officer's meeting, you know, after the events, and this is really a safety concern for the fire department. We need to have equipment so we keep our firefighters safe, and we can respond to the public safely. So probably before I extend my, over my two-minute limit.
No, yes, no, there's, no, there's no two-minute, I mean, that was so we could.
Okay.
The, no.
In the scheme of things, we understand the concern that you have supporting those communities. We, however, feel, and I really do feel strongly, that if we make a purchase like this, first payment doesn't come come due until two thousand and twenty-four of this year. But we have to make a decision now because there's twenty-month lead time on construction of the apparatus. We get that taken care of, we don't have to worry about it for twenty-five years. Then we can get our capital improvement plan on track, and we'd be looking at another apparatus in seven years. Also, if we buy new, we know what we're getting. We have warranties that come along with it. If for some reason it's a lemon, we clean our hands of it, turn it in because it's a lease. But I do feel strongly that this is the right way to go. Obviously, we are at the the will of you and the community, and if new is not the right decision, we need to come up with plans.
Yep, did any, any other firefighters want to speak before? Yeah, thank you, you know, for everyone, everyone for being here. So, yes, go ahead, Steve.
Very sorry, I lost the chief halfway through his, his dialogue. I'm not sure what happened to the microphone. I was hearing perfectly well, and all of a sudden I lost him.
That's not something I can recreate either.
That's a joke too, but come closer to the microphone. I'm sorry.
You know, let me move it out.
So, Steve, I don't know where, what's the last thing that you heard?
Cindy made a comment and you, listen, the only comment I have regarding all of this thing, I recognize your plight. You, yeah, Madam Chair, if I might, I think your option is a petition. I don't know that we already voting something down, we'd have to rescind everything. Is that correct?
We've got to review the final warrant. So yeah, there need to be a rescind, there need to be, there's a process. You're right, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you, firemen. I appreciate your input.
So can I just give a little history? And Harold, I'll, I'll come right, I'll come right back to you. So our former fire chief, when he purchased this in two thousand sixteen along with another apparatus, told the board, we wouldn't need to buy anything for ten years. This wasn't presented as a Band-Aid. This was a great apparatus. Don't worry about the capital plan. You're all, you're set for ten years. And so so it's, and, and the, and the plan, they historically always, you've always purchased good, used engines or apparatuses through a broker, you know, where I think there was one instance where, where we didn't. And that pumper is gone. But you purchase through a broker who guarantees a certain quality and, and standard.
We bought four trucks. Since then, the last new truck we bought was in two thousand eighteen, and it was a two thousand eighteen. In two thousand nineteen, we bought a two thousand seventeen. And then since then, we bought four other trucks. We bought a new tower. We bought a rescue truck, and we bought a couple of engines. With one engine, it was gone to Phillips, the tower. And we bought one because we lost the engine, the one we had. And the rescue, we bought a new rescue because that one, we couldn't get the front end fixed on it. So, but in our plan to replace, those are all used trucks. And usually you can get about ten to fifteen years out of a used truck. So what we're trying to do is get us set up in position to have two new trucks. And that would be the only two new trucks that we'd ever have. And we'd just buy used ones to fill in between when there's other stuff that doesn't get used as much. That way, it's the only way that Range you can afford to basically have a sized fire department because of the square mile area that you entrusted us to cover. I mean, we've got five or six contracts that we cover. It's not just like covering one town of Ranely. We cover a lot of towns. And it takes a lot of equipment. When one's broken down or one's on another call, to be able to, to go good on those contracts and cover. So our plan was to try to get our capital plan up there so that we could at least have one new truck in the quasifin, one new truck in Ranely that would go twenty five years. And then the rest stuff would just be used stuff that you'd buy. Because most of the used stuff you buy, the problems with buying used stuff is, and I've looked at a lot of fire trucks and say, unless you have the money with you, when a nice truck comes up on the internet, it's gone the next day. Unless you can call up and have the money and secure it right then, you'll lose it. You don't get a chance to get it. So you can't just go on and buy. So should we decide to go use, the thing is to approve the money up ahead of time. And that way, we, when we search and we find something, we can jump right on it and grab it.
Well, that's the beauty of a reserve account. And, and just to remind, to remind you, we didn't say no, end of discussion. We said, can we please have information on used, unused engines? And we haven't received that yet.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Two follow up questions for you, or two follow up answers for you. I'm not the last chief. So I go strictly by standard. So I don't me and you like that. Second, the used apparatus that we presented during the initial presentation, that was what was out there. The market is dry. It's, we're seeing issues with supply and demand, if you will, with used apparatus. The apparatus that we're seeing are, is older than Engine Three that we're trying to replace. So the market is just dry. When we did our initial presentation, the one that we presented was what was out there, and that went within twenty four hours. So. Sorry.
And this is, and this is the first time we're hearing it. Okay. So it's, you know, appreciate, you know, where, we, we, we need, we need information. And
I also think you need to answer to another question that you asked. And you asked, how much money have you put into the old, the Engine Three, the truck that you want to get rid of?
Well, that's something you should, you should supply automatically. We shouldn't ask for that. I mean, it's part of the presentation. It's like, this is, we, 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 we don't know that there are problems with Engine Three. This, this is news to us. Harold, please, go ahead.
So a little history real quick. I put together the first capital plan when I was chief, back in the eighties. It, it hasn't been followed. It's been updated many, many times. It's been driven by Chief Bacon here. But I think it's important for you guys to get on the, on the process and stay on the process of following your capital budgets. If we don't follow the capital budgets with the fire department, all of a sudden, we're out of sync with the sewer department, we're out of sync with the highway department, we're out of sync with the departments that need to spend major money on capital purchases. We also need to remind you, we don't pay a hundred percent of the price for the, for the new apparatus. We're in the forty, we're under fifty percent, somewhere between forty eight and forty nine percent is our actual cost to the Ranely taxpayer. Because of the size of the territory we cover, we have contracts that include apparatus reimbursements. With a twenty month build time, you need to give us the opportunity to place an order and get the, get a place in the build sequence to get this purchased. I, I offer you, please go out and take a look at Engine Three. Ask him for what work needs to be done to it. It's sizable. And it's not worth putting a lot of money back into that truck, knowing that there's something else coming down the line. That's, we're on this stuff. Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, Harold. And so, yeah, so, so some of the feedback I've gotten from plantations is that if there is a large expense, they would like to be informed. And we do have, because they've got to factor it in to their budgets as well. And it's just a matter of common courtesy. A seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase deserves a, you know, a dialogue and presentation to the plantations.
Has it not been brought up in the quarterly meetings?
We have struggled to, I, I don't, you'll have to ask Chief Bacon if he's had the ability to, to present or, or share that information. We haven't been able to la, the last quarter, we've struggled to get everyone to the table at the last quarterly meeting. Well, we've been put off, couldn't do it in April, couldn't do it earlier this year. It's, it's, it's a work in progress. Yeah, go ahead.
So for the past three years, we brought it to the board. It was on the capital improvement plan three, uh, two years ago, excuse me. It was put off because of COVID. We understand. Last year, we put it off again in hopes of a grant, which we've worked with Senator Collins' office, as well as Golden. And that, the, the competitiveness was just too great for quarterly. This would be our third year putting it off. I would hope the plantations, some of the plantations are aware of our plight. I would hope they would understand that we are providing a service for them. They have the right, don't please, anybody in internet land, don't take this the wrong way. But of course, Ranely Plantation, Sandy River Plantation, Dallas could start their own fire department. But you would be in the millions to start off. We're providing a service for a pretty decent value, I think.
So to respond, you know, to Harold's comment regarding the capital plan, and this was, so what the selectmen were presented with was for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three, the, to replace the chief's truck at forty thousand dollars. And then for the following year, to replace the aerial truck at five hundred thousand dollars. So this is, so, so this is the capital plan we've been presented with. And then, and then you add on a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar request. You can understand why we're like, wait a minute.
And we completely understand. However, we'll follow the directions that we were given to take example of the tower that's inspected every year and then move it forward a year. We have no problems with your input, moving those further out for next years. So this doesn't become an issue next year.
And this is all extremely helpful. I mean, this is, this is the perfect, this is the purpose of a public hearing. Steve, I can't tell, it's a little shaded. I can't tell if you've got your hand up or had your hand up earlier.
I did know. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. And I didn't know if, I can't see all of the participants, if there are others, if there's anyone that has their hand up or has questions. Okay. All right.
Madam Chair, you know, this is just a fire chief. I'll admit to you, we did a lousy job in our presentation. You should have been more aware of this sooner and what's going on. We could have done the best job at that. And I apologize for that. But it doesn't change the fact that we're in a plight that we need to do something about. That's all. And we'd just like to be able to work with you guys to figure out a way, any way, that we can get that truck replaced.
And we've always been open to that. We've always been open to that. We weren't, we didn't have, or we, or we didn't think we were doing the taxpayers a favor by agreeing to a, or at least, you know, the majority by agreeing to putting a warrant out there when we can't, we don't know why. We can't defend that, you know.
I will take the blame on that because that will all square that much.
But we appreciate, honestly, just everything the fire department does. Harold, do you have your hand up?
You just agreed to put all the nonprofits on the warrant, and let the taxpayers decide who's paying for what. Putting an article on the warrant for this fire drug does not change anything.
That's apples and oranges.
Totally different. Most, eighty percent of those donation articles are by petition. We don't have a choice. They're on the warrant.
Yeah, petition articles, we don't have a choice. Not state law.
And what's the legislative process to put this on the warrant then?
I guess, Joe.
So there are two options, Madam Chair. First option is go through the board's select, the board's selectmen can place it on the warrant. Second option is by petition, citizens petition.
There's a deadline.
Town clerk would have to give us the deadline. It's looming. It's very close. That's probably next week. So those are the two avenues in to get on the warrant, on any warrant, really. I don't know if we could steer the discussion, Madam Chair, or, or contemplate. And it's, it's a question that I would, you know, prefer to ask the chief one on one, but I'll ask it here because we're talking about it. Can we, can we do our due diligence with the plantations, get the board the numbers they need, and come back and revisit this either in November or next June? Do we have that much time, chief?
Well, so if we go by NFPA nineteen oh one standard, we're already behind. We started this process three years ago with, of course, COVID not, you know, we didn't, we didn't have any control over that. We thought we were going to have some, I thought I was getting out. We didn't have, you know, we went out to Senator Collins' office. It, everything looked great. Didn't work out. We're behind the evil. We're, we're behind.
I think the board was told that it needs to be replaced within four years.
That did not come from us.
I thought it did. Like, would it have been by, by years?
It may have been misunderstood. So that was the original standard. It's possible in conversation, we, maybe we got tied up and misspoke. But the new NFPA standard is twenty five years into reserve status. That is our most active.
Madam Chair, I mean, on the fire topic, a couple of years, and just through all the years, we've always worked with the board's selectmen. I, I don't support that the fire department going out and getting petitions at all. I think that we, as, as United Front, basically, you guys are elected, you hire us to do a job for you, and you're elected to do a job for the taxpayers. And we should be behind you, and you should be behind us. And so what we're asking is for your support. All we're asking is your support so we can do our job for you and the taxpayers. And I don't like butting heads with the board's select because it just does not accomplish what we need to accomplish. And that is to get things done for the taxpayers. And we're just trying to do that. And we're trying to let you know that there are tools that we need to do this job you want us to do. And we'd like to work with you and not against you to get this done. And so what do we need to do to convince you in some way to put something before the people in order to get us to replace this truck? I think you absolutely need it.
Yeah. Well, this, all this information has been very helpful. I mean, like I said, you know, the board was, was not aware that the truck was, you know, needing repairs. Or, and, and frankly, it was a, if this could have been discussed over a month or two during the budget process, it would have been extremely helpful. But, you know, that, that wasn't, that wasn't the case. So Steve, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With respect to the firemen, I totally, I am in total support of the firemen's wants, needs, and desires. The problem, there's a couple of problems that can't be overlooked as we discuss. One is, we don't fully pay for the entire fire department. It is broken up into other communities. Another, another component of, of lack of knowledge, we don't know unless we ask, which we should be doing, what the other plantations are paying. Recently, we have been on, discussed that, it's been discussed that saddlebags' wants and needs and desires are increasing. I feel their share of, contribution share should be elevated. And I believe it would be easier for the taxpayers of Ranely if they knew what the breakdown was. As we look at our warrant articles, it would make them understand that the entire fire budget is not solely paid for by the town of Ranely. And the, and this new truck you're requesting would have that moniker as well. Given that, I request, if we could, Madam Chair, to get this on, on the warrant article, the total, the total number of the fire truck with the breakdown, so that taxpayers, as Dennis has adequately pointed out, will see the breakdown. I think they understand that we're covering from Mcgalloway to the Canadian border, back down to Walden Flats and beyond, and Mutual Aid into multiple communities, including Canada. So that being said, I am in support of putting it on the ballot. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Steve. And it would be, this is a public hearing. This is information. It's not board business. So it's, it's nothing that, that we, you know, can make a motion and vote on right now. Any other final comments regard, yes, Ethan?
I was a few weeks ago and still didn't support putting, putting this on the ballot. I'm a big supporter of putting large things on the ballot, where townspeople are stupid. And I haven't seen one show up to one of these meetings and speak out opposed to having this on the ballot, or opposed to this article or anything to do with it at all. So I am also in support of putting it on the ballot as I was three or four weeks ago.
Thank you. All right. Any, anything else fire rescue? Shelley?
So I believe when we were discussing this, right at the beginning, when you brought it to our attention, one of the things we asked you for is to go to the plantation. Because a lot of their stuff, although it may seem like a smaller dollar amount than the town of Ranely pays, but that, they pay lower taxes. So that has a stronger impact on their tax base as well. And they have also mentioned to us that if there are large fire services, we should go to them. And, and I suggested that right up front. And then even if you, when you were getting the grant, go up front and say, this is my goal. This is what I'm trying to do. And I don't know, because we've never heard if that's, that's what happened to the process. And I don't know, because we've never heard, if that's, that's what happened to the process. But some of the other questions that I have, like, is, yes, you expect it to live for twenty-five years. We live in a different, harsher environment with rust, you know, from the salt and stuff that is on the road, so I, I just don't know if it will last up here that long. So, does that make sense?
Yes, going back to the present that we did make, this was spec for our environment, it's galvanized dip, it has a special suspension for the frost eaves, so to say. This apparatus was spec for Rangelay, not like when we buy used, it's not spec for our environment, so it does break down. And just to clarify, I do have the percentages that the plantations do chip in. Most are aware, because I do get out into the community, and I am now a tax, an official taxpayer of Dallas plantation, so as a taxpayer, I'm for this, even though my taxes go up a little bit. But currently, Rangelay is forty-nine point four percent, Rangelay plantation is sixteen point six percent, Dallas plantation is twelve point six percent, Sandy River ten point seven, and I do agree with Mr. Philbrick's comment he just made, and I have been talking with Sandy River, excuse me, saddleback about that, Franklin County Commissioners, five point two, and Oxford County, five point three. And this, this, that's their percentage of the truck.
Shelley brings up a very good point that we need to address, and that is the plantation context. Now, in the past, the selectmen have got together, had quarterly meetings, do you want, I mean, we don't have a problem, do you want the fire departments to go leave with the plantations on these things?
I, I will be going forward then.
No, if, if that's what you want to do, but we don't go into the other towns until we're directed by you to do so, that's your prerogative to deal with the leaders of other towns. You give us the contract, we give them the covers, but if you want us to do that, do presentations, then we can do that, but that should come from your direction.
Not so sure about that, but.
That's what I mean, I don't want to.
It's interesting, because I need to go to the other town.
As a chief. Yeah. Yeah, you would, yeah, anyway. Joey, had something you wanted to say, or no? Okay.
No, we're not going to.
Okay. Shelley, did your questions get answered?
I think so, but like, so I'm just curious, because I don't know, and the people that are approaching me are saying they just see new fire truck, they see the price, and they, they don't look at the percentages, they just look at how much has been across the taxpayer. So that's why all the questions come about the rust, about what's the life of the vehicle, how many miles you put on the vehicle, how many times you take it out of the bay, I mean, is that one used more than the other ones? So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out of what questions have been asked of me, and it's not anything like against anybody or anything like that, it's just a matter of people need to know their facts in order to make a true determination on what they're going to vote on.
My, my door is always open. If you have a question like that, direct them towards us, because we can tell them exactly how many times that truck, truck rolls. The fact that it looks new, that speaks volumes to these guys here who take care of the equipment, making sure that equipment that we do get lasts as long as it can. To me, that's a compliment, so, thank you.
That's what's great. Anything, anything else with fire department? All right. So, so what happens next is we, you know, this is a draft warrant, and so we, we take feedback, crunch some numbers, and meet at a regular select board meeting to draft or to vote on a final warrant. So this is all a part of the, all part of the process, okay? All right. With that, I think we've, we've got fire department summarized. Next is the police department. And I've lost track of whose turn it is. Mine. Okay.
Selectments recommended budget for fiscal year 2023 for the police department is three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars, it's a sixteen point nine four percent increase.
I just thought every category is, is up with, with a PD, so if the red means it's all up, did you want to hit the highlights at all, Kevin?
No, thanks.
Okay. Thirty percent increase, health insurance, mileage, office, vehicles and equipment, some day-to-day. There's, there wasn't a special purchase or, or anything new added. Animal control is also part of the police department. Their request is for five thousand seven hundred eight dollars, and it's an increase of two point oh nine percent, and that has to do with the animal shelter, so we have to.
Dog food or not?
Dog food. Yeah. Don't, and if it's in a aluminum can, it's going to walk even more. So that, that was the big increase, that was the big increase there.
Can, can I ask a question while you're on that? Have you guys related to attract police officers, if you've worked with the chief of police?
We've got an incentive, we've got like our ten thousand dollar signing bonus.
Good, because if you, you know, if that were officer, I.
Yeah. Ten thousand dollar signing bonus. Thank you, Harold. EMS?
EMS has an increase of six point oh three percent for seventy thousand five hundred seven dollars.
And we're presented with that EMS contract, and it's been hard. Fire hydrants. Ethna.
I blame all of this on Ethan? No.
I'd like to make a comment about fire hydrants.
Let, let me have.
I'm just going to spit out her number, and then you can say whatever you want, Dennis, how's that? Fiscal year 2023 selection recommendation, minimum one hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars, it's up two point five six percent.
And, and this is what is presented to us from the Range Water District. Dennis?
And they basically can judge what they want.
Yes.
I will have to say that I've always been upset with the fire departments with the price that we are paying them, we were not getting any reports. We were not getting flow testing, we were not getting other reports, but now we are, and it's so much better, especially when it is for a fire planning, so we know which hydrants are flowing well and which ones aren't. They work right alongside us at calls, make sure that the hydrants are okay and don't get pumped out when we're done, and a lot of companies have really stepped up their game when it comes to the fire department, so.
All right. Thank you. Next up is health officer, and I don't have a, well, the total request is three thousand nine hundred and fifty. I don't have a percentage increase, but the prior, that, the prior year, it's, or the current year, it's three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine, so it's about a hundred dollars less, and that is the stipend increase in related FICA.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Hearing reports from the audience that the microphone is getting weaker, I don't know if we can all do that far and project towards the microphone.
Project, okay. Shelley, project. So we paid out of the health officer, we're taking it from another reserve account for the computer, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. That's why that one is reduced. Highway, Shelley.
Highway. All right, let's see. There is a highway increase of thirty-nine point three one percent with an amount requested of one million, seven thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. And the increases are due to the wages, the insurance, the office, computer, postage, cleaning, wire equipment, and that would be, of course, our sand and salt stockpile, that's included in that as well, material, patch, culverts, humidizations, rental, and then telephone is also increased with electricity, streetlights, and heating fuel, water, sewer. Then the building vehicles, equipment, radios, routine, road maintenance is also increased as well as advertising, and then there is a large increase due to the road loan that is the first payment is this year.
The interest, you know, the debt principal and the interest. Any questions regarding highway?
Can you tell me the term of the loan?
Ten years.
Twenty years.
Ten years.
I think it's ten.
Ten?
Yes.
The other question I was going to ask you, we hired a mechanic.
No, and that's, that salary's been increased as well.
What do we do about that? Because we have, as you know, we've got a lot of fire trucks.
Yeah.
And they need their servicing and stuff, and right now, I mean, they're, they're trying to keep up and stuff, but sometimes it's pretty tough. It should be nice to have a town.
Yeah, I mean, we, yeah.
Want the job?
We significantly increased.
Want the job?
Oh. I was younger, baby.
We significantly increased the hourly rate, name hers will help, you know, if there's.
I mean, you've been offering some pretty good money, I just don't understand. You know, maybe it needs to go higher.
Walmart just put first year on the road drivers at a hundred and ten thousand a year, so I kind of know it too.
So it's going to be a while before we get a mechanic.
All right, any other questions for highway? And the LED streetlights have been a big savings, so those were installed at no cost. Ethna, sewer.
Sewer, fiscal year 2023 selection recommendation, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seven dollars, that is a one point four percent increase. Most of that is in wages, FICA, looks like telephone, building and computers, there's a decrease in the debt principal as the spread bond will meet its last payment.
All right.
Madam Chair, I hope you can ask a question.
Yeah.
Could you give us a statement on contracts? Is this a contract year, or is it, we in the middle of a contract?
Contracts were signed in 2021 for a three-year term.
And those are percentages every year increased, right? And that's what's reflected in some of these.
Yeah. Go ahead, Joe.
Madam Chair, this particular contract does not have percentages in it, it has an hourly increment in each of the three years. The percentages you see listed in the, in the budget are for non-union folks, that's three percent of the process.
So you don't have to negotiate for a couple of years?
No.
I'm going for that.
Solid waste transfer station is up twelve point five two percent. The requested amount is four hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, and just about every line is up except for advertising. So the wages, three percent increase, the FICA, health insurance, and benefits, mileage up slightly. Let's see here, you know, electricity, heating fuel, tel, I mean, you know, that naturally is increasing, and testing, monitoring, and the tipping fees, are the tipping fees, up forty-four thousand dollars, and transportation, et cetera. So just the, just the cost of solid waste is something we're going to really need to look at.
Well, if I may ask you a question, Madam Chair, last year, we had several meetings on, and it was in discussion on different ways we were going to do this, whether we were going to go single stream, or we're going to do that, are we still in the planning stage, or we decided on a permanent thing that we're going to do? Are we not going to do any more recycling, or are we going to recycle at the level that we're doing now, or?
That, I think that the gist we've gotten is maybe single stream is not the, the way of the future.
Madam Chair, it's, it's kind of evened out. A couple of years ago, it was very expensive, and the low one hundred dollars per ton to dispose of it, now it's closer to what it was four or five years ago, fifteen, twenty dollars a ton. That's kind of slowed down, maybe twenty-three dollars a ton. Where we're seeing increases, so to answer the first question first, we're not actively thinking right now about recommending halting single stream recycling because it has come down to a reasonable level. The biggest expense with, with disposal, as the chair said, was, is transporting it and then tipping, but those have just gone up. Not only the per unit cost has gone up, the number of units that Rangelay has been receiving has, has gone up too in the last couple of years, but it's mostly the cost of tipping and transport. And recycling is, is lower, even the, the single stream, it's a much lower percentage of that cost, considerably lower than, than the MSW and OBDW that we send out. But Keith and Rich and I are working on thoughts about how to get food waste out, food is very heavy, it's got high water content, if there are ways we can compost, if there's, if there are ways we can get that, anything we can get out of the stream that's being shipped out here, we're, we're looking at ways to do it.
Did that answer your question, Dennis?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay. All right, that, that wraps up solid waste transfer station. Shelley, airport.
So the airport has, is actually down point three seven for a total amount of forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, and the decreases are include mileage, office, postage, operating diesel, minor equipment, and building equipment, runway, beacon lighting, and let's see, the storm water, and the AWOS. And Janice.
That's the airport.
Can I ask you a question about the airport?
Yes. No, this is, this is a public hearing.
Can you tell us about the, the money that was left over from the project either through, because of the jury stuff? Does that stay in the airport, is that going to airport operations, or is that getting used somewhere else in town?
So you mean the money that, that the town earned from the Chick Hill?
Right.
That's in general reserve.
Okay, so it's a general fund.
Yeah, general reserve, not general fund, but general reserve, and there will, you know, there'll be, you know, future discussion on how to, you know, how to utilize those, where to, where to utilize those.
Does a portion of it go towards operations of the airport, to try and account cost there, or?
There, the, no, because actually, it was the inhabitants of the town of Rangelay that owned that dirt, it was not on airport property.
Yeah, the inhabitants own the airport.
Actually, it, it's, yeah, mainly funded by the FAA, so, Joe, maybe you could talk about all the money coming in to the, to the airport from a couple of different funding sources.
We left a, we left a hundred grand in there. We left around a hundred dollars.
Because the FDA doesn't cover a hundred percent operation of the airport, the taxpayers of Rangelay pay for the airport, it's lost.
Well, I'll, I'll have Joe run down what, what we've got.
First point, Madam Chair, the airport reserve, in the end of February, that account had one hundred fifty-one thousand, three hundred and forty, some of that was moved in by the board, left in by the board, as part of that transaction that the chair talked about. The second item that the chair referenced is during the twelve billion dollar project, which was proposed to be one hundred percent FAA, almost funded, there was a deadline to amend that grant, it was missed by the town and the town's engineer. So there was not one hundred percent funding at that point in time. Through our work with main DOT and the FAA, that total amount, which is seven hundred and forty, fifty thousand dollars, will come back to the town, most of it, mainly through a grant from the main DOT of the amount of six hundred and ten thousand, the balance will be coming back through entitlement funds, which I just applied for a couple of days ago through the FAA. So as it turned out, we're not doing a master plan this year. FAA said, you know, it's not, not anything you really need to do, you just did this major overhaul four or five years ago, no, the master plan's not required.
Then it was anything about, is the, are all the tax rate completed?
No.
Is that? Is that, is that in the works or does that, can this see money towards that or is that just not going to happen?
Hold on to that for one second. So $150,000 we would have used for master plan update FAA, we're in the process of applying to get the $138,000 of that $150,000 back as reimbursement for the project. So your next question was about parallel tax rate. I don't know if that's on the CIP currently. So the board just updated, authorized me to send an updated version of the CIP into the FAA. Don't believe tax rate is on that plan. There are other improvements on it. Pavement management of existing taxes.
Cracks.
Yeah, updating the pavement. Hangar development is a big focus. And there are some obstructions on the 32nd that treats potential trees that need to be taken care of, which is turning into quite a project. So those are the biggest things around the CIP. So.
Thanks very much. A couple of people asked me about that money. I was curious as to how it would be.
Yes. So that's pretty much all. All right, any other questions on airport? Parks and Rec.
Fiscal year 2023 select one recommendation the amount of $238,941. It's a 6.41% increase. Most of that appears to be in wages, FICA, office and program supplies as well as building vehicles, equipment and athletic facilities.
Any questions for? Yes.
So with regards to the programs that we put through for Parks and Recs, those aren't just for Rangel residents, right? It's for everybody?
Yes, they're open, yes.
All right, cemetery. The request is for $51,818. It's a decrease of 0.64%. And that's just, represents a slight reduction in grounds maintenance. Everything else remained the same. And the cemetery committee is working on a master plan update. So we'll, we're looking forward to that. Public services director.
So that's an overall increase of 2.76 for a total amount of $112,576. And the increases are regarding in salary, in health insurance, mileage, trainings and dues and subscriptions along with operating expenses.
Any questions on public services director? Rangel comfort station.
Fiscal year 2023 select one recommendation, $19,111, at a 7.18% increase, mostly in electricity and testing and monitoring as well as janitorial services that contract came in at higher.
The cost of comfort stations also up five, I'm sorry. Our requested amount is $16,006. It's an increase of 5.78%. And it is because of contract cleaning services received one bid for that. Culture. You don't have culture? Shelley, you don't have any culture?
I have a closet comfort station.
Yeah, just did that.
Ears and did you?
No, yeah, I got it, I got it, sorry. All right, so culture is up 112.03%. And the increase is to $25,550. And the increase was for fireworks and for the veterans monument.
Veterans monument needs an overhaul.
The culture note is, wasn't it, I remember a few years ago, there was something to do with the library involved in culture?
Yeah, so, yeah, so at a point in time, a few years ago, I don't remember how long ago yet, the library was worked into the, into the culture budget. And then it is now treated like a donation request.
Oh, good, so the library's out of the culture. That was my question. It's a different donation here and then here.
So no, but it's, yeah, no, no double digits.
Yeah, but please remember the culture includes your fireworks because one year it got voted down and everybody threw a hissy.
Because it's the.
Just saying.
Decorations too.
Yes.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the, the.
The flags.
Yeah, the flags and, yeah, Christmas tree, streetlights.
That part, yeah.
All right. Culture, general assistance.
Fiscal year 2023 select one recommendation of $2,000. This is a state mandated assistance program. We have no choice, we have to put something in there.
That ends the expense articles. We've already been through the donation request articles. So the only one, only article left in the warrant is the revenue budget article. And so it reads, shall the town vote to appropriate friendly funds from non-properity tax revenues for the approved articles in EX1 through DN19? This includes $275,000 from the unassigned fund balance. And that, the estimated revenues are $1,063,675, which is about $20,000 more than last year.
So how much are taxes going to?
Well, we don't have, so the school has.
We don't have a county bill yet.
We don't have the county bill yet.
Depends on who the contractor is.
The school, yes, go ahead.
They do have the school levels, but they're not, they're not plugged into this yet. They just came in.
Okay.
But it sounds to me like you're telling the town budget down pretty good.
It's selling you something.
It's a lot. We have a couple of huge increases. We have one of the hundreds.
So the road loan would be a big one. Yeah, that's pretty much what I'm hoping.
So do you, do you have that figured?
I have the grand total from the school, $3,624,292, about $40,000. $3,624,292 for that sense. That includes food service and adult education.
All right, so let's just take, so education for the current year is $3,572,101. So looking at an increase, an increase with that of about $70,000 or so. And then Dennis, we don't know what we have in additional tax revenue either. In our, in our revenue summary. Yeah, it's.
They can fluctuate a lot.
Yeah, well, you know, for, for the current year to date, you know, it's, you know, $7,590,000. And the assessor will give us an idea of where, where that will stand. There's been a lot of new construction and. Yes, Shelley, we have to figure out for the tip. Let's see here. I think that is the last, last article. Dennis, did you have, did we answer your question? That was the question you just asked about taxes?
Yes. It's hard to nail it down until you get the results of the vote in June and you have some idea around those. You don't have a moment to assess this.
Right. All right. Any other questions in, in our Zoom audience? Because I'm about to close the public hearing. Seeing none, all right. We will call this public hearing closed. If anyone has any questions or follow-up, just call a board member. We're happy, happy to chat. Steve's available by cell phone. He's in Florida for the month.
Call him.
Call Steve.
He's getting the vitamin D boost, call him.
But please feel free, we're, it's, it's always all about.
Sorry, Steve.
So how do you get more people on the budget? Which is a great point.
It, it is. It is.
See, I couldn't do that.
The budget committee only meets during budget season. So, you know, the budget is supposed to be, supposed to be received by February 1st. It was a little delayed this year. And, and then talks resume. Normally, the budget committee would be here. And if they had a different recommendation, they'd explain why. But it's, it's a very, it's a very short window and you get a lot of good information. Yeah.
New eyes are good.
They really are. It's because new people ask questions.
Yes.
You know, they have a different, they have a new perspective. It's really.
And it's good to bring it up and, and, you know, reiterate it and stuff too.
Yeah, definitely.
Sometimes you can check on stuff and say, you know what? We really don't need to do that anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the old status quo, maybe we'll do that in a different one.
Yeah. Joe, you?
I know you already, we're going to close it, Madam Chair. I'm just seeing a question in the chat from, I think it's Val Sapolsky. She's saying, I'm sorry I wasn't here earlier. Does anyone have any questions about the RFA warrant request? This just came in at 6:59, I just saw it.
Okay. If.
She just asked if there are any questions.
Any questions about?
Looks like no.
Okay, it's their after-school program. All righty. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We are going to move into an executive session.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. We are, I will call this meeting to order. We've got the whole board present. And we need a motion to go into executive session for consultation with legal.
Madam Chair, I motion that we go into executive session pursuant to MRSA 4056E for a consultation with legal.
Ethan's motion. And Ethna seconds. All those in favor? Steve, your vote. Okay, we have five unanimous vote. So to clear aside the executive session, there's no action to be taken. It's to adjourn. Ethan's motion. Ethna seconds. All those in favor? Steve, your vote, and that's unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
It is $7:59.
Don't forget your sunscreen, Steve.
I guess eight o'clock, that's what I guess. I'm like, I got.